Good evening. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, June 12th, 2018. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
My name is Pastor Fred Wood of the Riverbank Holiness Church, and I reside here in Riverbank also, so it's always my privilege to come since I pastor here and live here. Let's bow our heads for a short word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you on this Tuesday evening thankful, Lord, that your eyes are upon this city of action. We're praying once again, God, that you'd give our leaders here the wisdom to direct our city and the steps that you would have us to take. And, Lord, we're praying that our action would be actions of peace, that you would protect our safety officers, our deputies, our firemen, Lord, and firewomen. We pray, God, for your keeping hand upon them, and, Lord, for each one of the neighbors, Lord. Let us look to you for peace and to walk in your holy ways, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member LeAnn Jones-Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fossey is absent. Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There will be some changes to the agenda. First, when we do the consent calendar, we'll do everything except for 3D2, which is Crossroads, Landscape and Lighting District, where when that item comes up, we will draw lots, and one of the three residents of Crossroads will remain, the other two will get out. That's if we have Ms. Fossey here. If not, then we'll hold off. Yeah, we'll have to hold off. Secondly, Ms. Fossey has asked that I delay item 6-1, which I think is the most important item, but she would like to participate. I'll put it as in place of 6-2, and 6-2 will do 6-1. And if she doesn't make it by the end of 6-2, then we'll go right into 6-1 without her participation. With that, conflict of interest, any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
I know you already spoke about it. I do have a conflict of interest with that item, but just to make the record clear, I don't actually live in the Crossroads development, but I am in there landscaping and lighting, just for the record, okay?
And I have a conflict of interest for item 3D2, Crossroads.
And so do I. Okay. Any other conflicts? Then we'll go forward to presentation. Item 1.1, introduction of recreation supervisor Julia Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is kind of a happy day for us because we have a new employee that has taken the place of a longtime, very valuable person, Carrie, who left our employment about a month ago. And it's a really important position to the city. It's sort of Sue's right hand, really, for recreation activities, and we were really lucky to get a great candidate, so Sue's going to introduce her.
Mayor and members of the council, I am very happy to introduce Julia Pettit. She's been here for about three weeks as our new recreation supervisor. She grew up in Southern California, graduated from Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, majored in park recreation and tourism, minor in communications, so she's jumped right into our busy season, and she's working really hard on planning the Wednesday night family fun nights that's coming up in July, so I think that everyone's going to be very pleased with what she comes up with. So maybe Julia would like to say a couple words?
Hello. I'm a little short for this podium. I have noticed that I'm about a foot shorter than Carrie was, so hope that's not a problem.
Everyone's shorter than Carrie.
But yes, so I am really excited to be here. This is a wonderful community to be a part of, and I'm really excited to be able to serve you all. And there's some wonderful programs in place. I'm looking forward to promoting them, and it's been such a pleasure so far to work with Sue and Juanita and Ron, and have a wonderful staff as well. So I'm really excited to be here, and just like to let everyone know if they have any questions or anything, feel free to contact me. And any ideas as well? Excited about the events we have coming up. And yeah, any ideas would be very helpful, so thank you very much, and I'm happy to be here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Public comments at this time. Member of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purpose, state your name and the city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening, council members, and Mayor Brian, sorry. My name is Vicki Holt, and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library, and I want to tell you about our upcoming programs. Storytime is on Mondays at 10:30, and bilingual storytime is on Tuesdays at 10:30 in the morning. These are geared for preschool level kids, but since kids are home from school, it's okay to bring the older kids with their preschool families. The Mayor Book Club is on the second Monday of the month at 11:00 AM, right after regular preschool storytime. Thank you. Summer reading challenge continues until August 7th. Kids, teens, and adults can win prizes for reading. Our Friends of the Library meeting is tomorrow at 5:00. Stop by and find out ways that you can support the library. Next Tuesday, June 19th, we are making clay jewelry pendants with essential oils. This craft is geared toward teens and adults. The book club is reading Same Kind of Different as Me by Ron Hall. The discussion for this book is on June 26th at 4:00 PM. All programs at the library are free to the public, and it is because of our Eighth of Ascent dedicated sales tax that we are able to provide these programs and services. So please come by the library and visit with us. You're always welcome.
Thank you. Further public comment?
My name is Becky Barnes-Bors. I'm here to tell you tonight that you have an enormous problem in this city, and your number one problem in this city is with your staff and their lack of customer service, knowledge, and education about the Americans with Disabilities Act. Your city is phenomenally noncompliant. Your Director of Public Works does not even know your federal funding for streets comes from the Federal Highway Administration, and his comment to me was that you do not follow the guidelines or the rules of the Federal Highway Administration. I hope that at some point someone corrects him because your federal dollars for your streets are on the line. Your city clerk does not have the understanding that she is required to produce the Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan under the rules of the ADA when it's requested. That is not a public records request. Your customer service is zero in this town because I've been complaining about trees and shrubs blocking the sidewalks, cars parked repeatedly and for weeks across your ramps and your crosswalks in the Crossroads area, trash being put out across the ramps and crosswalks, and this city has done zero about it. So because of the behavior of your city clerk the other day, I immediately and right in front of her in the office filed a Department of Justice complaint against your city for failure to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and a complaint and grievance with Caltrans against any state funding that you get from Caltrans, or your failure to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the behavior of your staff, and the obstructive quality of service that you give people with disabilities. You have noncompliant bus stops that Stanislaus County came to you with funding that you guys didn't even cooperate with them to get the bus stops fixed. You're not even serving your constituents by having your staff follow through with other entities who want to help you with funding, fix the bus stops and other things because your staff won't cooperate. So I can only make suggestions here that perhaps you do something about your staff or you start getting rid of them because they're uneducated, they don't give good customer service, and that buries entities all the time. I suggest you look up the lawsuit against Lincoln, California, the lawsuit against the City of Sacramento, the lawsuit against Caltrans, and how these people have lost fundings and how the Federal Highway Administration has stepped in. Thank you.
Any further comment? We'll move on to the consent calendar consisting of 3A wave readings. Item 3B, approval of May 22nd, 2018, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, a resolution calling and giving notice for the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018, by district elections of council members for the residency District One and District Three as required by the provisions of the laws of the State of California relating to the general law cities to request the County Board of Supervisors of Stanislaus to permit the county elections officials to render election services to the City of Riverbank, and to request the consolidation of said elections with the statewide general elections held on the same date. Item 3D, three resolutions of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for each landscape and lighting districts, two. One, initiate proceedings for the annual levy of assessment. Two, declare its intention to levy annual assessments. And three, for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for fiscal year 2018-19. Landscape and lighting districts are named as follows. Item 3D1, Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District. Item 3D3, Ridgewood Place Landscaping and Lighting District. Item 3D4, River Cove Landscaping and Lighting District. Item 3D5, Sierra Vista Estate Landscape and Lighting District. Item 3E, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for each storm drain maintenance district ordering the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2018-2019. The districts are named as follows. Item 3E1, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District Number 2006-01, Heartland. Item 3E2, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District Number 05-01, Sterling Ridge. Do I have any members of the council wishing to pull any items except for 3D2? I bring it to the council for a recommendation?
I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion to accept consent calendar with the exception of 3D2 and a second.
Council Authority Member Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
At this point, we will draw lots for 3D2.
And the members that will be drawing is Councilmember Fossey, no, 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 Councilmember Barbara, I mean Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez, Mayor O'Brien, and Councilmember LeAnn Jones-Cruz.
So what's the ruling on the lots first? You have to tell that.
That's right. The member of the council with the lowest number will stay to vote and make the quorum.
Okay, thank you. I got three of them. Now I have one. I have 17.
I have 15.
Oh, you're lucky. Give her the hammer.
I don't have to read this item again, do I? Okay, so.
Just 3D2.
The title.
3D2, Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District. Do I have any comments from the public or on the dais? No? All right. Do we have any motions?
I move that we accept 3D2.
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
All right. I didn't. I know, it was quick. It was just one little thing.
It had to be. Okay, proceeding, item. We're going to go to 6-1. We're not going to reverse it, as I stated earlier. Dedication of a walking trail at Jacob Myers Park as the Scott McRitchie Trail.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I have to ask the council and community to bear with me here. I'm going to try to make it through this report without getting a little teary here. So as council and community are well aware, Scott McRitchie has served our community as an advocate and volunteer in Riverbank for many decades. He's not only served on a number of city committees, he has also served as a leader in a variety of charitable programs, and continues to be a key figure both with the Riverbank Housing Authority as well as a number of food programs at the Catholic Church. Most notably, for this item at least, Mr. McRitchie has been a longtime advocate for Jacob Myers Park as part of the Friends of Jacob Myers Park, and has been an important part of many of the most meaningful projects that make that place such a regional attraction that it is now. Internal discussions amongst staff as well as communications from members of the community and council have indicated a desire that council consider dedicated and important area of the park to Mr. McRitchie. A small area of the park, the campgrounds, have already been dedicated to Mr. McRitchie, but since the campgrounds are part of a larger walking trail area, staff would suggest that the entire area, which is encapsulated by the walking trail, be dedicated as the Scott McRitchie Trail. If approved, staff work to develop an appropriate entrance sign which dedicates the trail to Mr. McRitchie. The sign could also summarize Mr. McRitchie's may civic and volunteer-led efforts that make Riverbank the place it is today. So that's the, that's the staff report. I think on a personal level, most folks who have lived here for any amount of time, and certainly anybody that's worked for the city, have had the opportunity to work with Scott in some form. My personal story I'll share very briefly is when I started here, Scott called me, I think my second weekend, came and picked me up and drove me around town just to show me the different things that he was working on, and introduced me to the community just out of the goodness of his heart, not, no agenda, just to be involved. And really, if you think about it, that's sort of Scott in a nutshell. He just seems to do things because it's the right thing to do, and he truly cares for this place and especially Jacob Myers Park. And so on behalf of staff, we are fully in support of council's consideration of this, and I know that probably each council member has something they'd like to share with Scott, too.
Anyone want to speak before I open it up to the public? Okay.
I've had the pleasure of working with Scott since I've been a council member on several different ventures. Not only has he done a wonderful job with his ideas with Friends of Jacob Myers Park, with Friends of Jacob Myers Park, he volunteers time with the local Catholic Food Service, and he's been doing that for years. He also reaches out to other nonprofits. He helped Riverbank Cares get their nonprofit status, filling out their 501(c)(3), and Scott's just a pleasure to work with. He's intent on doing the job and doing it right, and I've enjoyed working with you very much, Scott.
Since I might add to that, Scott, thanks for all your leadership in this community. We couldn't have done it without you, and I also really appreciate all your comments up here at the council meeting. I know you often apologize for them. Please don't ever apologize for them. You bring a level-headed mind and something for us to think about, and your comments are valued, and continue that, please. Thank you.
Scott, I just want to say thank you for being you. I've learned an awful lot from you, coming from another city, another state, and just thank you for everything. I think that all of the knowledge that you have and the history that you have, you ought to write a book. And I mean, because when, you know, people want to know, how did something happen, or who was involved, or which way did it get started, Scott will know, so you ought to do that book. I'll be the first one to get one. Thank you.
I met Scott McRitchie the first year on the Budget Committee. We both started it with a couple other people together, and since that point in time, I have always respected Scott. He's been a person that I can go to and get an honest answer, and like you said, he does know the history of Riverbank. Thank you for all your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up to the public for any comment. No, you're not going to talk us out of it.
All right. I'm very much honored by this proclamation. As many of you know, I'm a closet case. I don't like the glamour, and it's real hard to be standing up here and listening to the accolades, but I really appreciate it. As part of a team, I get the credit, but none of this would have happened without a lot of different people contributing. And Sue Fitzpatrick was one of them. She was my partner in writing grants and things of that nature. And the first ones, we failed. We learned how to do it, and we started hitting home runs. So Sue's always been there, doing part that I couldn't do, and I would do parts that she didn't feel was comfortable with. Also, without the city councils over these 20 years, none of this would have gotten done. They've been very supportive of the things that Sue has put up that we've worked on. Also, for the different community organizations that provided the tables for the pavilion, things of that nature, the Rotary Club for their picnic site, so all this that makes this park better. Of course, you're heaping this on me, and it's, you know, it's a team deal. So any rate, also, we have scout projects. We've had three or four of them. The gazebo was one. They've worked on the bicentennial grove, and just most recently, we fixed up part of the roadway up by the campground. So any rate, I thank you very much for that. It's awkward for me because I don't like this kind of thing, but anyhow, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Sue Fitzpatrick, Director of Parks and Rec. I just want to say Scott McRitchie has been my mentor for 18 years, since the beginning. When I first started, he was there to help me get started, and like he said, we wrote a lot of grants together. I just wish we were able to have that amphitheater finished at Jacob Myers Park right now, and we can name that after him because that's been our dream. But one of the times I got overwhelmed, Scott, I would call Scott, and he'd come and help me put things in perspective, and I just, there's no one better than Scott McRitchie.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion that we accept item 6.1 as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item 6-1.
Councilmembers Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones-Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Congratulations, Scott. Now we have to rename the housing authority.
We can just name it Rick McRitchieville if you'd like.
I think Rooney would be upset. Item 6.2, a resolution submitting a ballot measure to the city's qualified voters at the November 6th, 2018 statewide general election, authorizing the city to impose a business license tax on the gross receipts of cannabis businesses in the amount not to exceed 15%.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city attorney's office prepared this resolution and associated materials, and so Newby, our city attorney, is going to give the report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you tonight, you have a resolution that we've prepared for the council's consideration to request a ballot measure be placed on the ballot for the November general election to impose a business license tax on cannabis businesses. So there have been a lot of questions. I know that the point of the resolution and the cannabis tax is one that I think there has been some misunderstanding from members of the public. And so basically, what this is, and what we're presenting to the council, is looking at it from an enforcement perspective. The city council has adopted a business pilot program for cannabis businesses, and in doing so, has authorized and adopted development agreements with public benefit amounts that the operators have to pay a certain amount of money towards the city to offset the potential impacts on city resources. This resolution and placing this item on the ballot is for every other possible scenario that does not include those approved businesses. So essentially, what this is, is a backstop. In the event that the state later on, or the BOE, looks at the city's public benefit structure and says, or in any way invalidates what the city's done, there's already something in place that needs to be, and in this case, has to be approved by the voters in order to implement a tax. This is a backstop, and in that context, this tax would only even come into place if, once the city passes a resolution later on, if the voters vote for it. So again, it's more of an enforcement mechanism. If you consider illegal operators, this is really to also address potential illegal operations that are not operating within the operative development agreements. So this would also be an enforcement mechanism that the city would be able to use against those illegal operators who aren't paying a tax but could open up a shop and not pay the city any type of fee. So that's really the contemplated purpose of this resolution and this ballot measure for the voters' consideration. So before you tonight is the resolution that would authorize this ballot measure and for staff to take the necessary items and actions in order to implement this, working with county staff for the November election. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Mayor, to add on to that, there are actually two actions we need this evening. If council were to move forward, the resolution would need to be adopted, but also the council needs to dictate a two-member committee to work on the ballot language for the initiative.
but also the council needs to dictate a two-member committee to, to work on the ballot language, um, for the initiative.
I have a question. Okay, so the suggested amount would, is, uh, fifteen percent. Well, up to fifteen percent. So what are other cities doing, uh, as far as that?
Right now, different jurisdictions are looking at it differently. I know that, I think the, the counties also implemented a tax. I think the city manager can speak a little bit more to that. But it ranges. It could be between seven, eight percent. I haven't seen anything closer to the fifteen percent. That, that seems to be a bit onerous. But if this passes, the city council could later on, after the November election, determine what amount is, works, works best for Riverbank. Um, so that, that's what the language does, is gives this council flexibility to go up to fifteen percent. That doesn't necessarily mean it has to, or it should, and that's something that we can evaluate with staff moving forward.
I believe the municipal voters approved their cannabis tax with about seventy-eight percent approval. And I believe it was up to fifteen percent, or was it up to twelve?
I'm thinking, I'm remembering ten percent for some reason.
Ten percent? And ours would be flux, you know, what we de- what we determine, or whoever in the future determines. Because the DAs may, may go away, um, or they, the BOE, uh, can do whatever they want, and they approved it this year uh, by not, uh, doing any of the adjustment on gas tax. So our streets and roads are short. So, you know, they can do whatever they want. So we'll just have to, uh, uh, protect us if, uh, we deem that the state would, uh, want to have a full accounting of, um, taxes.
Yes, and, and one other thing to note on that is, since this has to be approved by the voters, the only, the next time we'd be able to put this on the ballot would be at the next election in two years, unless the council wanted to go to the trouble of doing a special election, which we recommend against. And so that's why the timing, um, again, in, in conjunction with the new regulations, emergency regulations that have been put in place, and the possibility that at the state level, things could change. This is more of a protectionary measure for the city, moving forward.
I appreciate the way that you said this is a backstop. The cannabis industry is here, and if you're reading about it at all, you're finding out that it's on fire all over California and other places, too. And with this, there are some bad things, but there are some good things. It is providing employment, and a lot of the employment that's being provided is requiring college degrees. But also, there's a questionable part there still with the federal government and even the state government. And I think Nubia did a good job of bringing that out. If they were to proclaim our procedures not adequate, illegal, whatever you want, we would be left hanging. We can't do this again for four more years if we don't put it on the ballot now. Nobody can tell us what's going to happen during that next four years. So on the basis of that, and a lot of the inconsistencies with what's going to happen, I personally would support this particular, uh, tax because I think it is a good backstop for us.
All right. I guess I get a moment to speak here, and I guess I've got to be the, the one that throws some stuff out there. Um, I have some issues with just taxing to create tax. Um, I've fully read the, um, reports. I fully understand why they're, um, presenting this for the city to do. But I just, there's just something in the back of my head that says a couple of things. One, we're taxing this business above and beyond other businesses. Yes, I see the other side of the argument. Um, two, we already have community development agreements, I mean, sorry, development agreements with folks, and those will be in place, and this is just to, um, you know, be there in case. But I just, I just have some issues with creating taxes for folks to just create taxes. And I don't know that I'm saying this very eloquently, and thought I had something else in mind when I was, um, preparing for this this evening. But I, I just have some issues with taxing because we need to have it on the, on the books to tax. There was another point, and maybe I'll say something afterwards, too. I, I just, I just don't know that I'm for this. I, yes, I understand why we need to put it on for, and we know I might not have a chance to. But one thing, and I kind of come back to a comment that Mr. McRitchie said when we were kind of hashing all this out at the very beginning. And he was like, we need to be careful not to tax this business out of business. And I, I'm not sure I'm quoting you exactly, but creating so many taxes that we can't, we can't, we tax them out of being able to do business here. And essentially, when we put taxes like this, um, from the top down, it just goes right to the consumer. And I think we need to be aware of those kind of things. Also, that this just goes right back to the consumer. And if we tax so much and make it so high for consumers, we're kind of going back to setting up a situation that folks might not, you know, come to the dispensaries and buy it there where it's, where it's legal, and going back to some other practices that might not be so legal. I just have some, some questions and concerns about this. And I, and I, I might be the only one up here questioning and concerning it. And yes, I know it doesn't have anything to do with our dispensaries and the, um, that we already have in place. I get that, and I think they do, too. But, um, I don't know. Riverbank's one of those cities that we've never taxed our retail operations. So what are we setting up for the rest of the businesses here? Are we going down that road again to tax other businesses? I mean, it's kind of, you know, we come across in our strategic planning, and we talk about we need to be business-friendly. And this just doesn't necessarily seem business-friendly to me right at the moment. So I maybe need to be, um, in here some more of it, so. Although I do see the other side. I, I get it. So, you know, I'm not ignorant and negligent in preparing for tonight. I just, I have some issues with taxing this.
I fully appreciate your, um, opinion on taxes. There's a lot of, uh, industry-specific taxes that happens, such as the transfer, uh, well, TOT, the, um, transient occupancy taxes. There's a lot of others that are out there from ten, twelve, fifteen percent. This is not in addition to. If you look at our DAs, they are just as onerous as the ten to fifteen percent. Not that we are making it onerous, but that's, that's just a, a stopgap measure, just in case something happens in the future. And although I believe the, the individuals we have right now, the industries we have right now would continue, um, our agreement, uh, but the BOE would probably take a look at it and saying, we're not getting our cut. That's why they would, uh, eliminate it. Um, or they may want to have a more, um, s- specific way to address the, the taxes on marijuana. And that's always changing. The state has, has, you know, has a couple more marijuana, um, or cannab- excuse me, cannabis legislations. I can't call it marijuana. Cannabis, uh, legislations that will, um, affect even the operations as, as they are today. So we just have to be prepared. That's the reason why it's here.
I have a question. Do we have any of the hotel taxes on our books right now?
No, we do not. We do not have a hotel that has it. I was, wanted to bring that forward, but we can't unless we have an industry.
Same kind of thing, though, isn't it? I mean, if you're saying that we're putting this tax in place, it'd be the same kind of thing. And I don't see us talking about putting a hotel tax. And I know we have some interest in putting hotels. So just kind of throwing that out there, too.
Right. And if a hotel were to come here, it would take, uh, a lot longer than the next general election to be here, because it...
Right, we're talking about philosophy and, and...
Okay.
Yes, I am.
I'd just like to want, make one point of clarification.
I'd like to pass it to Fossey, then back to you.
I just would like to make one clarification. If, if I'm understanding this correctly, right now, they pay a percentage to the city, um, through their DA, correct?
Yes.
This is in place so that if the state comes in or the federal government comes in and says, no, we don't like those, we're going to stop that, and there's no more payment, this steps into place to replace that?
Yes. And it would be in place, and the reason why we would like to move this forward as quickly as possible is that it would be in place as soon as something like that happened, instead of waiting to then schedule it for the next election and see if the voters would approve it.
It's not an additional tax. It's a, we're going to wait and see and be prepared.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I respect, uh, my colleague's viewpoint, but I would like to clarify one point. We are only proposing the tax. This tax is going to be voted on by the public. They will pass it, not us. And I think that's a good thing. We're not putting the tax and passing the tax. We're putting it out there for them to consider to pass. So they will be involved in it, and it will be up on the public to pass it.
If it's a specific tax, what is the percentage? Is it fifty plus one, or is it fifty-five?
I, well, there, there is some discussion of, um, an initiative that's been rolling around. It talks about any tax to be approved by, um, I believe it's like a three-quarters vote. But as of right now, it's a fifty percent plus one. This is a majority. And one point of clarification, in order for this, uh, resolution to pass tonight, it has to be approved by two-thirds of the council.
Right.
So we would need, uh, four out of five voting, affirmatively.
Any comments from the public?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Awesome to be up here. See you guys. Sorry, I just broke your mind. I don't know what the heck happened here. But the reason why I stand up here and, and, uh, come and speak to you tonight is on behalf of patients. And, um, I understand that the city must prepare and, um, that the state and the feds and, you know, all the dark shadows are out there waiting. But, um, the patients are who end up paying the tax at the end of the day. And, um, I think that it would be nice if our city was to look at, such as Modesto, where they have a ten percent cap instead of a fifteen percent cap. And here in this bag, um, I brought some receipts. We're from Dixon Wellness in the city of Dixon. We're, we're only, uh, less than two weeks old. And, uh, these are some of the receipts from the patients that, um, came through the door today when I was there working in the dispensary as a, as a consultant counselor. And, um, they're just very high. And I'll leave these tonight with you guys, and you guys can go over them and, and pass them around and look at them. We're, we have a state tax on us already. We have a county tax on us already. We have, um, the development agreement that's in place, but per se, that was to go away, and we were to fall upon this tax, per se, it was to be voted in. It would just be nice to know that the patients would have a smaller cap than a larger cap. And, and I understand that our city attorney's office is, is very intelligent, and they know, um, you know, what's going on around California and other parts of the world and in America that's dealing with cannabis. But, um, as I spoke to Mr. White today, I just reminded him that bottom line, the patients get the tax, and we want to be as courteous to the patients, um, that use the cannabis as a medicine, because other cannabis or other, um, pharmaceuticals do not carry a tax. Um, and, and it is, um, it is nice that, um, cannabis is available with safe access in, in the communities that allow us and provide us to come into the community and provide it. But, um, just remember that the patients are, are at the end of the line paying the tax. Thank you for your time.
Just to clarify, when the county puts their taxes on it, it will not affect the cities?
It's, it's...
In Stanislas?
Oh, in Stanislas.
Okay, because we've separated from, from a, a tax from the county.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, go ahead. Go a second.
My question is, um, for your facility, your facility's not open yet, right?
My facility is the Riverbank Hotel, which is right next to our beautiful city hall that has not received building permits at this time to be able to, um, build out and be functionable. But I am praying to Jesus, as I do every, every day of my life, to please give us some building permits, and we can move forward and, and be open.
Well, my question is, when you open that facility and you have, uh, the requirement of the DA to pay a certain percentage, do you not add that to the product, which would be different than when you have a tax? So, so now you would have it to the product, when the tax would become in effect, it would simply be a tax. Is that not correct? So...
It's added on to the, the receipt as, on the point of sale as a tax.
Right. But if we don't, if you don't have a tax of, let's just say we make it fifteen percent. Okay? If that doesn't go in effect, but according to your DA, you have to charge ten percent, you have to pay the, the city ten percent, do you not pass that on to the customers also?
At the city of Dixon, we did, um, half of it. And it just depends on what city and what amount, and, and how we can fit it into our budget, and how we can fit it into the price, um, compatible price for, for the area.
Okay, I just want to clarify that it's not really going to be something new, because they're paying it just a different way, if I'm understanding correctly.
And, and I just want to make the fact that they're paying it, you know? So people who come in to have a better quality of life, um, you know, they just try to keep the tax at a minimal, just for, for sake of, of being a...
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, City Council, hi, Mayor. My name is Danielle Gravell of River, Riverbank. Um, and like Deanna, I work at a dispensary. I've worked there for three years. I work at a therapeutic alternative in Sacramento. Um, and as of January first, the taxes went from twelve point two-five percent to twenty-eight point two-five percent. If you are a patient and you were purchasing on December thirty-first, your bill went up significantly the next day. And you had to make a decision between, am I going to get this product that I know works for me, and this lotion that I know works for my pain? Or do I get both somehow, some way, by compassion of the business? Um, we're lucky enough at a therapeutic alternative that our director is very compassionate. Our team is incredibly compassionate. We have seen over the last six months them go into what we call the karma jar. That's their tip jar. They have pulled out twenty dollars, fifteen dollars, five dollars, sometimes thirty dollars of their own money that they've earned that day to cover a patient who can't afford their medicine, because they weren't business savvy, they weren't legislation savvy. They didn't know that the taxes were going to change when Prop sixty-four went through. And it wasn't just Prop sixty-four. It was the Medical, uh, Medicinal and Adult Use Regulation Safety Act, which actually gave a flat line for the fifteen percent excise tax, the nine dollars and seventy-five cents per ounce on cultivation. Then you still have your state and local use tax, and your community benefit tax. Right now in Sacramento, they pay four taxes on their medicine, and that's excessive. To talk to cancer patients who have to sit there and make decisions about medicine they can no longer take, that they've been taking for five years, maybe ten years, it's very heartbreaking. And I urge anybody who thinks that this is recreational and just something, you know, fun to use, to come to a therapeutic alternative and spend a day, spend an hour, spend fifteen minutes listening to patients and hearing the things they go through and what they use to treat this for. And it's really unfair to place a burden on them. You're saying just fifteen percent cap? Well, that's fifteen percent on a fifteen percent excise tax. That's thirty percent, plus your state and local use. So you're excessively taxing these people who need this medicine. And then the provisions of the regulations have taken it away, so people can't just give them cannabis either. Um, so what has happened is with the combination of, it's, it's a multi-effect thing. So it's not just taxes. You've got all these people who aren't licensed, who never made it through the licensing process, because those are huge licensing fees that they couldn't afford. They're now on the unregulated market. The market is filled with cannabis that is unregulated now. Our patients tell us that they just go get it from somebody. They can go walk down the street and find someone midtown to buy it from, because it's so readily in supply. Our sales have gone down fifteen percent this year. On average, they were going up twenty percent. That's happening across the industry. It's not reasonable for people to go pay these thirty, almost thirty percent. In Dixon, it's thirty-eight percent. The business has absorbed five of it to give them thirty-three percent. Why would they? Why wouldn't they just stay in the unregulated market? I praise you guys for making the decision to regulate it and have it here, but I urge you to be diligent and be cautious and be compassionate when you set those caps, because fifteen percent might not seem like a lot to you, but it is a lot to a patient who has to pay that out of pocket. Thank you.
Before you go, what, what would you recommend? Well, we have an impact, I, I know it's, you are doing mainly medicinal, but people go in there with medicinal, I want to get high. And you, you say that that's okay, but...
We, well...
There are impacts that are ha- uh, are, are happening here locally.
To be honest, I mean, I, I would say ten percent is fair, but, um, to generalize and say that everybody who comes in recreational...
I didn't say that.
I know, I'm, the people who come in recreationally, eighty-five percent of them... I know, and the people who come in recreationally, eighty-five percent of them want it medicinal. And it's, you know, your sixty-five-year-old grandmother, it's your ninety-year-old grandmother, it's your aunt, it's your kid who's twenty-one and, you know, doesn't want to use Adderall. It's people who want an alternative but don't want to talk to their doctor about it because they feel stigmatized. And that's what we're seeing. And these people, even though they're seeking medical benefits, they're paying an exorbitant amount in tax.
Is the DA fair?
Yeah, I think our DA is fair. But I just urge you, when you give it to the voters, maybe have a lower cap because fifteen percent is a lot.
All right, thank you.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Eighteen percent.
Well, the question was, what's the cap on the DA? So for a therapeutic alternative, it's, ladies, help me out here because there's a couple out there. Seven percent or it's. So it's actually, it's really, it's really comparing apples and oranges. It's not the same because there's a base amount that you pay regardless. And, and then over that base amount, you pay a percentage, which you said seven? Seven. So it's not the same as, you know, a tax because if you, you know, had a rough month, you only pay that small amount of your rough month. Under a development agreement, there's a floor. You always pay that floor regardless. So it's sort of difficult to, to, but, you know.
Anyone else from the public?
I just have a couple of questions. When the city passed the marijuana ordinance, one of the things that it stated was that more like commercial, dispensary, commercial cultivation, all, all of those. One of the things that they shall have is, development agreement, law to permit. What businesses would your city allow in here to operate without that development agreement? Because that's what the tax is on, the ones that don't have the development agreement. What ones would you let operate in here without it? The other question I have.
Evelyn, just to answer that question, the answer is none. They, they have to have a development agreement. That now whether the development agreement includes renumeration, in other words, payments for, in lieu of taxes, that's, that's where things could get changed if the state decides to change legislation. But in terms of just permitting, they have, they all have to have a DA. That's the way it counts.
He says the tax is only for those that are operating without a business, a development agreement.
Or, yes, or if, you know, the, that component of the DA was, was found to not be valid. So the, the DA is, is many things. It's not just how much are you paying the city. It's how are you going to operate? What are your hours? What do we do if, if, if the city gets into a dispute about how you're operating your business? How does your business get shut down? So it's the total package. And correct me if I'm wrong, but this specifically addresses if that one particular section, the taxation or public benefit section is, is no longer valid.
That's one, one of the components. And I think maybe to address the first question a little bit more, the idea is to potentially use this as an enforcement tool against bad actors. The idea of regulating cannabis and allowing these businesses to operate with permits, with a development agreement, there is not a scenario and there is a potential scenario in which operators will decide to open up illegally and say that they weren't aware or, or for whatever reason. And that's happened in many jurisdictions. This tax can be used as an enforcement mechanism against those illegal businesses by saying, if you're operating outside of a development agreement the way you're supposed to, you're subject to this tax and you have to pay it. And, and that's a mechanism that the state has used many occasions against businesses to operate illegally.
Now, my understanding from this camp was if there was any operating outside of a development agreement illegally, they would be shut down.
That is true.
That is correct.
Tax them instead?
Yes, exactly.
But that doesn't let them off the hook for what they did illegally.
Taxes at the helm?
I'm just going with what you told the public before. My other question is on the tax itself. When you collect this tax, you start collecting it, first of all, what account is it going to go into? I mean, where are you going to put it? Who's going to get to use it? And second of all, what are you going to use it for? It's not going to be a benefit like the public benefit fund because that's only for development agreements. So are you going to set up some rules or structure regulations of what you're going to use this for? The benefit fund that you're talking about goes for the impacts that these places are causing. But the tax you're collecting on these other ones that are illegal, they're not going to have to pay for the impacts?
But that's a great question, Mayor. The, the answer is that if it's a general tax like this is, it's, it's completely discretionary by the council. The next item is actually to set up that specific special fund. And, you know, I want to speak for the council, but I imagine that in the unlikely event this even gets used, those funds would probably be going into that same fund since the idea is exactly the same.
Well, they're going, you set that up where you're going to set it up before we vote on it, so we know what.
Next item.
No, that's not the tax. That's the special benefit fund. That's two separate things.
Right, but I'm, I'm telling you that it would be within the council's purview to, to budget that money into that fund, yes.
Right, right now, as drafted, the ballot language is to allow, for voters to say yea or nay to allow the city to direct those tax funds to go for whatever purpose it, it deems necessary. So there isn't a limitation on where that money could be used.
Any further public comment? See, and then I bring it back to this council for either further discussion or recommendation.
If I turn it on here, I'd like to see us maybe change the percentage. And you could probably have my support on it.
Would you like a ten percent?
Yeah.
And it's not to exceed the ten percent. Normally, what, what you would do is talk to the industry, what is acceptable, but you're allowing it to be up to surrounding areas. Oh, except for the county. Is there any discussion? Okay.
At the very least, at the very least. I mean, I.
I like the ten percent.
Okay, so can I have a motion on that?
I move that we change the article to, to a ten percent tax instead of a fifteen percent.
Well, let's, let's do, let's go for something along the lines like, I move that we approve item six point two with the exception of changing fifteen percent to ten percent instead of just.
I say, I'll go with that.
No, yeah, please do.
All right. I move that we take the article and accept, and change it to ten percent instead of fifteen percent.
I second.
Okay, what I am hearing is that we're going to accept item six point two, a resolution submitting a ballot measure to the city qualified voters, changing the percentage of the tax not to exceed ten percent. And we have a second.
Council members, Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, moving on.
I have a second part of that.
Oh, yeah. We have a, a second item to discuss is having a subcommittee.
Right, so the subcommittee's responsibility will be to work with staff to come up with the ballot language that explains the tax for those.
Will these items be agendized in minutes?
It's a subcommittee, so it's.
It wouldn't require, and that's the whole point of having the subcommittee, is that the subcommittee can draft the language and we can process it. We can bring it back as an informational item on the consent calendar in the future. And this is, this would be for language for, in support of the ballot measure. And, and also a potential rebuttal in the event members of the public provide something against the tax measure.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to be on the committee.
Yeah.
You want to or you want me to?
Why don't you do that?
I would like to be on it also.
I'm not sure.
So I'd like to move that in our subcommittee, we nominate the vice mayor and the mayor.
I second.
Good. Do we have a motion and a second?
Council members, Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we're done with six point two. Item six point three, resolution authorizing the creation of a special revenue fund to be referred to as a public benefit fund and appropriating all current and future cannabis-related revenues to the said fund and prioritizing expenditures to be made from said fund.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Assistant City Manager, Maricela Garcia, has put together this item and has, is going to help walk you through, set some priorities for that, those monies.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Tonight, we are seeking your authority to create what will be known as the Public Benefit Fund. GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, requires that we have official action from the city council appropriating this specific fund to a newly created fund. So why create the Public Benefit Fund? We're looking to facilitate the transparency of the accounting of all public benefit and cannabis-related revenues and expenditures. We also want to ensure that future city councils and future staff know the prioritization of expenditures. So as we go through the budget process, we already have those in mind when preparing the fiscal year budgets. So the makeup of the Public Benefit Fund will include the public benefit fee that's currently negotiated as part of the two development agreements that have been adopted by the city council and any future business license tax on the cannabis businesses. We're also including any non-performance fees, interest or fines that are dictated within the development agreements as well, as well as administrative cultivation permits for those that have in-home grows and any other current and future cannabis-related fees, fines or penalties that the city council develops and adopts. The intent of the public benefit fee is to improve, upgrade and create additional community facilities and infrastructure. We want to enhance services. We want to be able to assist in implementing the goals of our general plan. And we want to pay for the impact on and the maintenance or improvement of surrounding neighborhoods where are these particular type of businesses are located. And so a recommendation of the prioritization of the expenses. And these were developed through some conversations with staff as well as through some direction that the city council has provided through the numerous public hearings that were held when we were developing our ordinance. So the first being public safety, and that can encompass the addition of deputy sheriffs or other law enforcement staff enhancements. Second, to code enforcement, particularly to oversee and monitor our administrative cultivation permits. Three, to service enhancements. One of the discussions or one of the suggestions there was providing recreational opportunities for our residents, whether it's for teens or for children or adults. And we could provide that in the form of new programs or in granting opportunities to be able to allow more of our residents to take advantage of our current recreation programs and other personnel offsets in order to administrate the funds such as finance. And so tonight, we are recommending that you create through a resolution, the Public Benefit Fund, that, which will, one, appropriate all cannabis-related revenues to said fund. So anything that's been currently received, currently sits in the general fund, it will be moved over to the special fund that's being created. And second, we'd like your prioritization of the expenditures to be made from said fund in the future. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Maricela?
Well, I do. So, what kind of other projects or, we can make suggestions to you as far as.
Yes.
How to spend the money?
You can make suggestions. The, the funds are really discretionary, so they are up to your discretion to allocate towards any type of project that you'd like us to see. I know some of the other areas that came up were, were potentially having to do some traffic studies in relation to a particular business where they thought that maybe there was going to be traffic issues. So projects such as those can be included as well.
Okay. Well, I would like to see the, remember our sign that we had on the Viaduct? We had a sign that lists all activities. Maybe we could talk about an electronic sign going there of our events and so forth? So.
We could, there's another fund for that, which we can talk about there in strategic planning. But yes, there are, there are ways like that. I'm looking at, you know, we, we can do this during strategic planning on the twenty-fifth, but I would like to see, you know, a, a school liaison officer, as well as additional police officers, code enforcement, things that can relate exactly to that, but then events that brings the community together, such as what is going to happen like Wednesday night out or whatever you guys are going to call it, as we started several years ago. But, you know, it's, we can prioritize that and we can change that priority every time that we have strategic planning session, if we need to, based on how much money is available in that fund.
Correct. So the intent of being able to prioritize is because we currently only have one business that's active. Their development agreement dictates a certain minimum amount that they will be paying, so that's money that we can count on and that we can budget on. And so then that will sort of dictate where we're able to allocate the funds to.
So let me get this straight. We want, we're looking at like the big picture. So maybe prioritizing like the big items, like public safety, code enforcement. And like a third category, what I kind of hear some of us talking about is maybe a special projects category. So if we have some special interest projects or something that, you know, say the sign of the time is we need to talk about public safety officers, that, you know, maybe some of those. So I, instead of like being really specific with it, maybe just putting like three categories in there and saying public safety, code enforcement, and then special projects. That could be towards recreation or signs or safety officers or whatever the, you know, the, the environment is at that time that we feel a need. And then it leaves some, then it leaves some direction of the current council for the future of what they want. It's not so specific that it has to be, oh, this, 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 but it can be a little broad for some special interest projects.
But there's one fourth item which is in there, and that is for the administration offset. For, you know, that's, that's in the resolution, the fourth one.
And these are all just suggestions?
Those are suggestions, but if we go that route and then, you know, go specifically at strategic planning where we can hash out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just missed that one. I, yeah, had that one in mind also, but I just left it off there. Admin fees.
I may. The, the only thing, thing that I see that's wrong with this, I, I understand everything that's being said. But I know that when we did what we did with the development agreements and brought the dispensaries in and whatnot, our main focus was public safety and police officers. I don't want this to open it up that we forget that that's our main focus. This gives a lot of laterality here. There's no specific figures in there. So we've got to be very careful because I, I promote us getting our police officers here, here first and getting those up to standard. Then if we have the extra money, we start using it more. I'm not saying we can't take a little bit here and there, but I want the majority of it to go to making this, getting these officers that we've needed for a long time. Because it's wide open right now.
I understand that, but I was just saying something, you know, we need to be thinking long-term. And as we already have heard, we can do more of that in strategic planning. But I was just throwing it out to see if that would fall under, you know, somewhere in the, in the plan. But we can talk more about it in our strategic planning.
Yeah, I didn't hear anybody up here say that it wasn't public safety. I was assuming when they said prioritize, that public safety was at the top of the priority. So I didn't hear that it's just.
Well, however, the way that it's written, you could interpret and take the funds, there's no percentages or any guarantees there for anything.
And, and there's not. And the intent is that we're going to come to you during budget preparation and let you know how many, how much in funds we think we're going to have available. And based on your priority list, we can say, yes, A, we can fund one deputy or we can fund one school resource officer. Two, we can fund half a position for code enforcement based on our estimates. Three, that leaves us a little bit of money for perhaps those special projects that you might want to prioritize. And that gives us direction to be able to move forward and say, okay, this is where we think the funds can be spent on.
Can we change the title of the third one to special projects and service enhancements to encompass both? I think that that'll encompass both then. Because I, I want us to keep that service enhancement. to keep that service enhancement and those may possible grant opportunities to our residents. I think that's important.
And while we're working, we also have to realize supply and demand. We may have a demand for two additional deputies, but they may only be able to supply one or none. So, we're going to have to talk about how are we going to backfill that? If they can't supply us with the deputies, do we go out to, um, rank, or we go out to some other on, on court, whatever they are, OnStar, or whatever? Do we do that? And how does that affect our contract? So, there's a lot of that we have to do on, when we, when we are prioritizing. So, anyone from the public wishing to get in on this debate?
Before you start deciding who's always going to get all this money, look at your development agreements. This is one you've already passed, okay? It stays in there as a city shell, not might or may, but shell. Use that public benefit amount to pay for impact on and maintenance and improvements of city neighborhoods, and for the, uh, exist, uh, level of service of the city infrastructure to accommodate the project. I don't know why you want to accommodate the marijuana businesses, when they're causing the impact, but you add that at the end. But it stays in here, that it's supposed to go for on maintenance, infrastructure, and improvements for the neighborhoods, and for what impact that they're causing. Not to put up a sign, that's not impact. The, uh, choices you have are the last one for administration. There's nothing, there's no guidelines again. It's just kind of wide open, is that, on that thing, as to what you consider administration, how much you're going to take out, they're going to take out of it, you know. It's wide open. Administration of the fund has nothing to do with impact whatsoever. Um, as far as the other stuff, I mean, code enforcement, if you're going to get into the code enforcement officer, you need one that's going to be here at evenings and weekends, because that's when all the stuff happens. That's when you get most of the problems. And the one you have now just works days. But I'll tell you what, I hope, I, I know Mr. Campbell, Councilman Campbell, excuse me, was listening when you had these packed houses in here, because he's right. That was the main issue with a lot of the people that come, commented and came to those packed meetings. The big thing is the, uh, public safety, because with this big, huge marijuana thing you've got coming in at Ganji, you're going to need a lot more public safety, and you're way under now. That's going to be your biggest impact, and that should be where the money goes, public safety, because you're way under deputies now.
Any other further public comment? Can I bring it back to council for consideration?
I make a motion, we approve item 6.3.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve item 6.3, and a second.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Resolution authori, item 6.4, a resolution authorizing the city manager to recruit and fill a halftime neighborhood improvement officer, one, one position.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna Kenny, of our many, many roles here at the city of Riverbank, one of them is, is code enforcement, and so, uh, I think that everybody up here have had conversations with all the council about the need to, to, the many code enforcement needs we have in town. And so, Donna has put her thinking cap on, has come up with, I think, a very creative idea about how we could part, part-time fund a, a position in the short term.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As, as stated, this is about a neighborhood improvement officer one. Uh, just a, a brief summary, um, you know, Proposition 64 was approved in, um, November of 2016. Uh, the council then approved ordinance number 27, 2017-007, which established, established, sorry, established, uh, the regulations, uh, concerning cannabis within the city. Uh, one of those actions was to create an administrative cultivation permit, um, which, um, is for folks who want to grow their six plants at home per, uh, the state. Uh, it also, um, regulates commercial dispensaries, commercial cultivation, the distributors, the deliveries, and testing laboratories. So, the Neighborhood Improvement Officer One, uh, the city currently has that job description. Um, this is what the monthly range is. So, the halftime position would be about, uh, seventeen hundred dollars to twenty-one hundred dollars, um, per, uh, month. And the proposal is to use funding for the administrative cannabis permits and, um, abandoned vehicle, uh, funding. So, the, the halftime position would be to abate abandoned vehicles and to issue and inspect the administrative cannabis permits. They would also monitor the commercial cannabis activities and assist with staffing at the counter. Uh, we do have people who walk in, ask about our cannabis regulations. Um, in fact, we have had, um, go back one. We have had, uh, three code enforcement cases right now of folks who, um, have moved forward to, um, put in outdoor gardens, which is prohibited in the city. And so, um, our code enforcement is starting to ramp up as far as cannabis goes. And so, this position is , uh, really necessary, because our, um, one code enforcement officer is working really hard on weed abatement and parking and all the, um, uh, various complaints that come in on a day-to-day basis. Now, the thought is that, um, the administrative cannabis permit is, uh, the fee is a hundred and twenty dollars per year with the fifty-dollar reinspection fee. And so, as those processes are, those permits are processed, this would go into the cannabis fund to help support this position. Um, currently, uh, the city works with the, um, oh, here we go, Stanislaus County Service Authority Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Program. And, um, through that program, when the city abates a vehicle, um, we are given, um, some grant money. And recently, our, um, our current code enforcement officer, um, has been doing about four, I believe, a month, um, in her spare time. And, um, so that has been equalling to, has equaled about a thousand dollars and sixty-five dollars per vehicle. So, that money also could be used for this, uh, halftime position. Since we really don't know how much of the permit fees are coming in, and how much of the vehicle abatement's coming in, I mean, those numbers could all change, um, I suggest, um, assessing this position at a three-month, uh, a three-month time, uh, to ensure that this is cost-neutral, that what the officer is doing as far as abating vehicles and processing the permits bring in revenue to cover that position. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have some.
Um, yeah, uh, I agree with Evelyn on, on evenings and weekends. Uh, can we, uh, assign alternating weekends, um, not to take away every weekend that they have, but alternating weekends for activity, uh, especially in the, in the neighborhoods, as well as the, um, the current cannabis bus, uh, industry?
Uh, that is something I could look into. Um...
I don't direct staff like that. I don't need to talk to...
Right.
There's, there's, there's no reason that we couldn't work out all, you know, so for example, with our, uh, we used to have a water enforcement officer, sometimes that person would work alternative timelines to, to catch folks. Uh, so, Donna would have the ability to kind of direct that schedule, so she's getting the most, most bang for the buck.
Correct. We want to do, you know, uh, we want this person to be able to go out when people are home, um, in order to inspect for these permits. Um, and as far as abandoned vehicles, they're banned, they're going to be sitting there during the daytime, during the week, and weekends as well, so that could be, uh, a viable option.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. I think you kind of answered it a little bit. Um, with this position, when you say abate vehicles, is that more clerical in office, but it's sounding like it's more out on the field? Is that what we're seeing?
It is in the field, yes. Um, they would, um, go out to the vehicle itself, take photos, get the information, come back to the office, work with PD on identifying who the property or, you know, who the vehicle belongs to, and then start that abatement process.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a seventy-two hour process?
Seventy-two hours, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for vehicles on the street abandoned?
Oh, yes, correct. Correct.
Or if they're in a state of disrepair, that, you know, it's clear that they're not movable, or...
If they've got cobwebs, flat tires, and it's, they've obviously been there longer than seventy-two hours. Usually, if, um, we contact somebody about seventy-two hours, they move their vehicle.
Okay. Any further questions? Anyone from the public wishing to, to discuss or, um, speak on this item? Saying that, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion, we approve item 6.4.
I second.
We have a motion to, uh, approve, and a second on item 6.4.
Councilmembers Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.5, accept a report on the status of the LRA budget for the third quarter fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Melissa is here this evening, and she'll walk you through the budget, such as it is.
Good evening, Chair and Authority members. Tonight, I'm bringing you the third quarter local redevelopment authority budget for your review. The Fund 197 revenue is on target this quarter. Um, I wanted to go straight to the total expenditures. We did have a little more expenditures than revenue this quarter. Um, so, I wanted to also point out that the net effect of that is that we're still in a positive, and I'm hoping at the end of the year, that stays that way. So, um, 198, the OEA grant did expire in December. Uh, we did apply for a grant, and we got a tentative agreement. So, a lot of those expenses and the admin are going to be reversed with this grant coming in once it's executed. So, you'll see that at the fiscal year end. Fund 199, our ESCA account is on target. We're actually in the second phase of the, uh, scope of work, and we are continuing to get advances of funds, so that we have cash on hand to cover the expenditures that the subcontractors are submitting. And the roofing siding capital project, that is almost complete. We do have a small section that has not been done, and I don't think it's going to be completed before fiscal year end. So, the next quarter, you'll probably see a line item for a small portion of that, and, uh, we'll have that one completed as well. Any questions?
In your staff report, you did a woo-woo that you were all completed on roofing and siding.
You know, I thought we were. We had Building 15 completed, and then I found out that we have one, uh, small area in the production area, that, uh, it's the transformer area that we need to shut down, and the, the tenants are kind of balking about it because they're in the midst of their production. So, we're working with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
You don't get to go.
Yep, Mayor.
If there's any other questions.
Uh, I think, I just want to point out one quick thing. She glanced over it like it was no big deal, but she, achieving that OEA grant is so important to the LRA remaining solvent, and, uh, and it, it was, Melissa stepped in at a time when we really needed someone to step in and, and got that. And it, I know it wasn't easy, and, and, but it's, it's a big deal. And she's not choosing to make it one, but I'm going to.
And they said it our last year, so they, but they said that in December as well, so...
That's right.
So, the only thing that you have really that, uh, major coming on up is that water tower.
So, yeah, we're working, we, we think we have a, a solution in the works on that. Yep.
Okay. And you're included on that solution, correct?
Yeah, I, I think that we probably should do a roundtable on that with, uh, the Facility Management Group and Public Works and our, and Sean, Maricela, and myself, find a solution to that.
And so, the timing of a lot of this stuff is pretty, it really makes a huge difference, because depending on what happens with potential master developer, we may or may not need to move forward with that. That may or may not be our responsibility. So, we're just sort of focusing on that master developer completion, and then we'll address those other issues as we can.
All right. Any questions from the public? Bring it back for either discussion or recommendation?
I move that we accept, uh, item 6.5 as stated.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to accept item 6.5.
Authority members Fosse?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, we go to the, the real part of the meeting, which is comments, coming from the staff.
Uh, just, uh, two quick comments. One is, um, Sue, uh, remind me of the night for our first family night out, Jul- July 11th. Does that sound right? Thank you. Uh, so, we really want to try to get the word around about this. Um, we're going to do three of these this summer, bands, vendors, uh, we're going to do the public safety bicycle rodeo. Um, there's going to be recreational opportunities for kids. Um, it's just an opportunity for people to kind of get out of the house and, and enjoy a little community. And, um, if it's successful this year, and we get a good turnout, then we'll talk about maybe some kind of expansion next year. Um, so, if you could pass it along. And second, I wanted to thank Scott again for coming. When I, I sort of, um, uh, accosted him at church the other day, when he was doing his work down there, and told him, told him I was going to do this, and he wasn't exactly excited about it. But thank you for being here, Scott.
That's it. Okay, item 72, council authority. Councilmember Fosse?
First of all, I just want to apologize for being late today. As a single parent with a daughter entering high school, I got to go sign up for her to do sports. And it was at 5:30, and the parent had to be there to sign. So, I do apologize for being late. Uh, for all those parents out there, um, I know the summer's here. Keep your kids safe. Uh, give them things to do. I know I have a hard time finding things for my thirteen-two days fourteen-year-old. So, if anybody has any ideas, I'd love to hear them, because all she does is sleep all day. But, um, it's an exciting time of year, graduating, going into high school, um, those graduating from grade school, going into junior high. So, uh, just, uh, excited, and, uh, I'm really proud to be living in Riverbank, where I can have such a, uh, big impact on my daughter's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Campbell?
Uh, I'd like to encourage, uh, the public to pass the word on about the Wednesday Night Outs that the city's putting together with the Recreation Department. And likewise, I'd like to thank all the citizen participation that we had tonight. We don't get that a lot of times, and it's really very important in a democracy to hear from you. Uh, and, you know, that's how things are really decided. So, thank you very much for being here and stating your opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Um, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank the staff this evening. Um, I'm not sure that everybody out there knows. I know you get the agenda, and it's back there, but what also comes with the agenda is pages and pages and pages of these reports, and they're online. And for the staff to put all those together, I just, sometimes boggles my mind, not because I'm like, oh, my gosh, what do I have to read this week? But, but just the hours that go behind putting all these reports together, um, I just thank you, because they're awesome, they're very informative, they kind of give us a really clear idea of what's going on. And I just, I can't imagine putting all this together two times a month for all of us to read. So, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work for all those, and they're, they're nice, they're good to have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, just a quick comment about, uh, our family night out on, uh, Wednesday, I mean, yeah, Wednesday, July 11th. We also will have food, so don't cook that night. Just come out and have some food with us. And, um, I'm working with Chief Kylie, so this is our annual bicycle rodeo, and it's for children, uh, ages five to twelve. And if anyone would like to be a vendor there, um, for an activity just for that night, please contact, uh, me or either Parks and Rec, because we are looking for vendors and activities for, um, the, uh, for the young folks to do. And I just want to remind... And I just want to remind everybody that the weather is beautiful now. Stay hydrated, especially these next two days. And enjoy our parks, because they really are beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to not only say congratulations, Scott, but Marilyn, every time he does something, you're involved too. So it's... So I want to, I want to thank you for all, all you have done for this city, too. And not only, besides him, you have extra stuff that you do also. So thank you. As I stated, the BOE Board of Equalization forgot to distribute their gas tax. So what does that mean? Is that our local streets and roads are going to have less funding? And they will not do a back payment. So there's a lot that we have to be judicious about, aggressive about, which we will be at Stan Cog, trying to make, make sure that we get money, so we can continue our streets and roads. Measure L is not to replace anything, it is in addition to. And that's what I'm going to strive, that we continue to do with Stan Cog and with the state. I have to admit that with our relationship with Caltrans District Ten Dennis Agar, he has been a true friend to this city, coming up with recommendations, pushing projects forward that normally take five to ten years of study before they go through the planning stage. And just, just a real quick update on the crosswalk near the Catholic Church. It is ready for, it has a plant, planning...
Project manager.
Project manager. I, I knew I would get it out. I was one once. A project manager, as well as drawings, and they're going for the right-of-way, which would make it a nice, easy-to-do before the end of this year. So if you take a look at what usually happens, and what's happened is because of our relationship with Dennis Agar and Caltrans. The state of California has had very numerous bills on housing, and we have to keep abreast of that. Housing is going to be, could be taken away from cities in planning or additional, if the state gets their way. They have a lot of bills out there that is taking away local control, not only in housing, but also in the way the marijuana industry is being regulated, where they will permit from the state, not going through the, the cities and some of the, the regulations. It's just a grab eventually for more monies. And their thirteen-billion-dollar surplus is not good enough to be used for emergencies, but it's just for rainy days. I just want to remind everyone, strategic planning is on the twenty-fifth, I believe it is? Twenty-fifth, Monday, the twenty-fifth, before our next regular scheduled council meeting. So we'll all be hunkered away during that time. And last, I would like to state that I have complete faith and trust in the staff that we have here at Riverbank. They are small, they, they are hugely undermanned. There are shortcomings at time to time, and that all we need to do is correct when we can. But I have not had that many issues with customer service. Maybe I'm wrong, but I believe that I, I, the staff has, I believe, the entire council. We, we depend on you, we welcome your support, and keep going. We truly are proud of you. And that includes the city manager and the assistant city manager. Okay, with that, we go to closed session. Starting with item eight point one, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code five four nine five six point nine. One potential case. Item eight point two, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six. Agency representative, Sean Scully, city manager, employee organization miscellaneous, employees, mid-management bargaining unit. Prior to going to closed session, the public will have up to five minutes to comment on the closed session as set forward in the agenda right now. Do we have any public comment? Sehna, we adjourn to closed session.